Good evening, Rolling Meadows. This is the committee of the whole meeting September 18th, 2018. We're convening at 7:30 PM. I do have an introduction. We do have a new deputy clerk, Judy Bros is here tonight. So we want to welcome her to our family. And I do have a request from the council is that when you speak, please let Judy know your name so that she can get used to it. So, thank you. Starting off with that, Chief Valentino, you are it.
Okay, here I am again. So, tonight I'm here, thank you, Mayor and Council. So, tonight I'm here basically to introduce the fire departments asked to participate in an Illinois Department of Public Health pilot study program known as Mobile Integrated Healthcare. And this has been planned for and developed over the last two and a half or three years, thank you. And it is waiting for our commitment and Rolling Meadows and the fire department's commitment. The basic need of this mobile integrated healthcare program is really to provide community paramedics as at-home healthcare and post-admission advocates for the hospital and for identified at-risk patient population once they are discharged from the hospital, specifically Northwest Community. This is our pilot program. Preliminary studies nationwide have demonstrated that using paramedics in a preventive way can reduce healthcare spending, and we're all concerned with that these days. The National EMS Advisory Council reports the following, that field EMS agencies and practitioners can be a powerful resource as the United States struggles to reduce the cost of healthcare through preventive interventions. So, the Illinois Department of Public Health, along with Northwest Community Hospital's Emergency Medical Services, have developed and approved a pilot project to address and study the outcome of Mobile Integrated Healthcare, or MIH, and a plan in the Rolling Meadows and Palatine area, and specifically also, and on top of that, the Inverness, which is Palatine Rural, our partner in the RPM endeavor, which is rural Palatine and Meadows. Specific outcome points have been developed based on the Institute of Healthcare Improvement, the IHI, Triple A Initiative to Optimize Health System Performance. And in summary, MIH core components and priorities are simply stated that we are going to try to provide the right care to the right patient in the right place, at the right time, and at the right cost. So, I will presenting a resolution in the next council meeting, or the one after that, allowing us as the fire department and our involvement and commitment into a one-year pilot program. And there will be an agreement between the city and Northwest Community Healthcare for that. And please understand that the need for action at our next council meeting or the next one is necessary in order to accommodate our other stakeholders in this project, which is Northwest Community Hospital EMS system, Palatine Fire Department, which last year, I don't, last night, approved their integration and of MIH with Northwest Community, and our other neighbor Palatine Rural Fire Protection District, who also approved it at their board meeting last week. I do have Connie Matarra here. She is the EMS Administrative Director and System Coordinator for Northwest Community Healthcare, and she's available here. I would ask that you allow her to speak because she is the face of Northwest Community EMS, has been for 40 years. She is a friend to Rolling Meadows, our fire department, and she does everything and makes everything at Northwest Community Emergency Medical Services great. One of the best EMS systems in the country. So Connie, would you? And I'm available for questions, but Connie's our expert on this.
Okay. Well Connie, welcome.
Thank you.
It was nice to meet you. Thank you.
It's a pleasure to be here, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm excited about this particular endeavor that we're now launching into. You're very familiar with the EMS system, I'm sure. We started in December of 1972. Our system was the first EMS system in the state of Illinois. We actually developed EMS for the state of Illinois. And we started with only 72 paramedics at nine agencies, and today we have 1,500 EMTs in paramedics at 24 agencies. We cover roughly 400 square miles, and last year we did 72,000 calls within the EMS system altogether. As the chief said, Rolling Meadows is one of our absolutely valuable service areas in our system. You have the distinction of probably having more nurse paramedics than any of our other communities, to the extent that three of them help us with our continuing education program. We do 105 classes a month out in the fire stations, and some of your own personnel are the ones who help us teach all of that. So it was a very natural thing for us to be able to approach Rolling Meadows when we wanted to now look at this next natural expansion of EMS care through this community paramedic system. You have excellent people. We have a great relationship with your community, and I think this would be kind of a wonderful extension of our partnership. So, I believe that you have been able to receive the pilot project as our planning currently has it. I want to echo what the chief said. We have a lot of people that go to the hospital, they're admitted to the hospital, and then we discharge them, and unfortunately, oftentimes, we have to discharge them to a nursing home. The extended care facilities do a good job, but it's the most expensive way we could possibly do healthcare, and 70% of the time, they never come out of the nursing homes. They are basically now going to be enrolled there forever. On the other hand, when we study this around the country, if we have a safe way of discharging them to home, and we can help them understand what their plan is after we discharge them to home, and they understand how to fill their medications, take their medications, and make healthier choices, if we get to them within the first week to 10 days after they go home, it's amazing how you get them now in a place where they can stay in an environment that almost every patient would say they would want to be home as opposed to somewhere else. So the reason we've studied this for so long is, I tend to be pretty heavily data-driven, and with that, I wanted to see what other parts of the country had done, because this is not new. There's parts of the country that have had these programs in place for over 10 years. They all do it a little bit different way. And so we studied the ones that were highly successful, seemed to have the most impact on the community, where the patients liked it well enough to be able to go out and help sell it basically to other people. And that's how we came up with saying we wanted community paramedics to be able to go to the homes of folks who'd been discharged with five different diagnoses right now. We will clearly expand that in the future after we collect data on these five, just like we'll extend it out to more parts of our EMS system than what we're starting with the pilot. But these are some of the big ones that keep making them come back to the hospital. So as I studied our population studies for our service area, folks with pulmonary edema, people who have had heart attacks, people that have chronic lung disease, folks who have had pneumonia, or those who've had large joint replacements are really some of the ones that struggle the most sometimes when they're going home. So that's who we are going to be visiting. And the way we've set this up, when working with our physicians as well, is that we'll have basically like a stoplight approach, that if they are seemingly pretty sick and at high risk, we would be able to have a community paramedic there within 12 to 24 hours, which would be ideal, just to see that they've gotten home okay, they filled their medications, and they seem to be doing all right. On the other hand, if they seem reasonably stable, but we just need to sort of stop in and do a safety check and see how you're doing, then we'd be able to be there within 24 to 48 hours, and we would be doing anywhere from one visit to four visits based on what the patient's needs are. So you can see all of that kind of written in here to see how would we determine who should be enrolled, and how would we communicate with the physicians. So again, in many places, as I studied California, for example, they were able to reduce the number of rehospitalizations in their pulmonary edema patients by over 49%. That's significant. So we would hope to be able to achieve some of the same kind of numbers. If we can keep them healthy and at home at a lower cost, that's a win for everybody. So this is a new role for our paramedics. They are not going to be doing the acute emergency management that they've always been doing. We will provide them with additional education where they're thinking long-term chronic care as opposed to short-term emergency care. So they'll be branded differently, they'll have a different scope of practice, and they'll basically be doing this as a side job during the pilot so that we can gather the data. So if I can answer any questions for you, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the council?
Sure.
Mr. Budmats?
Hi.
Sorry. Mr.?
Mr. Budmats, second ward. Just a couple of questions. What's the difference between this and like a home health nurses? I'm trying to understand that.
Certainly. The home health nurses are often going to have a little bit of a broader expanse in their scope of practice, where they'd bring equipment out to the homes that would let us do some point-of-care lab testing, for example. To begin the pilot, we are not proposing that we would be doing lab tests other than what they usually do, where we can draw blood glucose level. In many regards, it is very similar, but we're following the protocols written for the paramedics as opposed to the protocols written for the nurses. In all honesty, the reason this is needful is sometimes patients aren't eligible for home care. They don't want home care. They love their paramedics, but they don't want a strange nurse necessarily coming into their home, or they've run out of their home care days. So the way I characterize this is we're a little bit like spackle. We are the glue that's kind of holding everything together, where we're just going to fill gaps. We're not going to stand in the place of any other healthcare provider. We're really going to come and fill the need where we haven't had anybody else be able to fill it.
Is there more of a potential for liability, pardon me, on the part of the fire department if they're performing more medical care than emergency medical care where maybe malpractice would not be as prevalent versus an after-care type situation?
It's a really good question. Under our Illinois law and guidelines for MIH, I can't ask them to do anything that's already not within their scope of practice. So I'm not expanding their scope in terms of something that I don't already have liability coverage for. They're operating within it from a chronic care model as opposed to acute care, but there's not a single skill or assessment that they're not covered already on their liability coverage.
And then I know that we, as a city, recover a fee when the paramedics are sent out. What would happen in this case? Is there going to be some renumeration to the city from the state, or how is that going to occur?
Yes. So, when I studied the country, the thing that unraveled, a lot of the initial MIH plans were, some of the larger ones got innovation grants from the federal government. And as soon as the innovation grant funding dried up or went away, those programs then ceased to exist. The reason we're here as a partnership between you and the hospital is Northwest Community is going to pay your community paramedics a stipend based on the reimbursement model that we received from the fire department, saying this would be all of our direct and indirect costs plus a little bit of a cushion, and based on each hour's worth of care, this is what we will reimburse you. So you, as an agency, will not take on any financial risk at all. The hospital is going to cover your initial capitalization as well as a reimbursement for every visit that your folks do.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Budmats from the second board?
It's now finished.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Jim McCall? Oh, no. Our city attorney?
I would like to repeat some of what Mr. Budmats said. Northwest Community Hospital has home healthcare.
They do.
And to that end, can't Northwest Community Hospital provide this type of care? Why put this on the paramedics?
Okay. Again, as you look at the community paramedic or mobile integrated healthcare models around the country, some of them do integrated models where they will send a nurse and a paramedic. Some will even send a physician and a paramedic. Some only send paramedics. If you've seen one MIH model, you've seen one MIH model. If you look prevalently around the country, however, the more economic way to provide this care when home nursing isn't an option for that patient is by having the paramedics go out and do it.
Economical to whom?
Economical to the patient.
And the hospital.
No, to the patient.
To the patient. Okay. So, I haven't had a chance to go through all this, so I apologize. But is, are the paramedics employees of Northwest Community Hospital, or are they employees of the City of Rolling Meadows?
Okay, they're going to be exactly like they are now. They're employees of Rolling Meadows, but they're borrowed servants of our EMS medical director, and we'll retain that model as we go forward with this. It will not change the reporting relationship or how they're functioning at all, in terms of why they're being empowered to go out into any patient and see them.
So who controls that Northwest Community Hospital or City of Rolling Meadows?
We're, again, it's a partnership. Right now, the medical director is through Northwest Community. He is our resource hospital medical director for all of EMS, at all 24 of our agencies, and Dr. Jordan remains the medical director for the MIH program. He's the one that creates all of their protocols and what they're to do while they're out in the field. No change.
I understand that. But the reason I ask the question is, if, God forbid, a paramedic should make a misdiagnosis or make a mistake, and the paramedic in the city gets sued, if the paramedic is now under control of the city, but an employee of the city, I don't know how the hospital's coverage comes in.
All right. We have, for the program, we've got liability coverage for all of the community paramedics. I believe there is several different policies that the hospital has put in place to cover all of their liability. Please remember, during this program, they don't have to make a diagnosis, the patient already has been diagnosed. We're simply going to the home to see how effectively are they meeting their discharge targets. They'll be in direct communication with either the hospital or with the patient's personal care physician, just to be able to give them, here's what their vital signs look like, here's what their lung sounds look like. So they're not independently making decisions that are going to end up not having an accountable person hearing what their assessments were. Your liability for this particular program actually is far less than it is under the acute care model that you have right now for your paramedics.
But acute care parameters for the paramedics are when they're called to a C. So, you know, you've answered all my questions, and I appreciate your time.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Cannon?
My Cannon, first ward.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon, first ward.
Thank you. First of all, thanks for coming ahead in front of us. This sounds like it's really an exciting program. I guess I have a couple of operational questions for chief. So with these, the men and women from our department would go out and make these calls, so would this be a place that they've previously called on because they have a relationship with that patient? And then I guess the other one that goes along with it, is this off-duty paramedics or on-duty paramedics? How does this work?
So what happens is, there's going to be a hub at the hospital from the outpatient coordinator, or whatever that may be, where they speak with the patient before, at discharge, and they agree that they are going to be involved in the MIH. So there is an agreement, even before they leave the hospital, that at a certain time within a prescribed time, that a community paramedic will be visiting them. That's number one. And number two is, it goes through the hub from the EMS office to a logistics coordinator that we have yet to determine, it'll probably be out of Palatine, and then they will give us a list in the morning at 8:00 AM and say, you have X amount of visits on the day, here they are. We expect the first visit probably to last an hour and or so, because not only do we go through the checklist of what's necessary, but we also, by the program, conduct a simple house survey, a safety program, which we haven't, we do have that in place right now, the Safe Senior Program. So it's really hand-in-glove for us, because we do do that already, so we're good at that. And then what would happen is, we actually will ask for volunteers to participate in the program from Rolling Meadows, and we will designate, if we need, four, five, six, or eight, to accommodate the need. And what we have agreed to, in a temporary tentative agreement with the firefighters local, is that this will be performed at a rate which is typically called a 7G rate, and it will not be at a union time and a half rate. It will not be their hourly rate plus one-half times. It's prescribed through the Fair Labor Standards Act as a 7G rate. And thanks to Local 3075 for agreeing to that in a timely manner, which was Thursday in negotiations, so that I can come forward today and get this ball rolling for the hospital so we can get going after three years on this. Does that answer your question?
It does. And then I guess a sister question would be to it, so from an operational standpoint, how do our people get to the clients? Do we use, look, I saw in here, it has to be a city of Rolling Meadows vehicle with a register, you know, with the sign on the side. So what kind of equipment are we going to use to go out and actually make that call?
Okay, I can answer that for you. Because this is not an acute care ambulance response, the community paramedics are simply deployed within a vehicle that's branded for the community paramedic program. So that can be a car, it can be an SUV, it's certainly not an ambulance, they're not transporting anyone. So we're looking at part of the startup cost of all of this is to be able to make sure that we're securing the vehicles that we can be able to brand and send, just like they will be in duty uniforms that will have the community paramedic branding or patches on them as opposed to the village patches. Because it was asked of us that we try and really make sure there's a distinction between when they're on duty as an acute care paramedic as opposed to a community paramedic. To say where the patients are coming from, we will identify people that are looking at, within our risk profile, we have an analytic program when they're in the hospital that will say, these folks are at the highest risk. And so the ones that you're Rolling Meadows folks would be going to their homes are residing here in Rolling Meadows, just like Palatine medics will go to people living in Palatine. And you may or may not have already had them as a patient. If they came to the hospital to get admitted through EMS, then you would have already seen them. Sometimes they're driving themselves, however. So then you have a Rolling Meadows resident who's been in Northwest Community, we've now discharged them, but you may not have had them as a patient already. So you may or may not have them in your database.
So chief, are you, from an operational standpoint again, are you pursuing us to buy a couple of vehicles to handle this program, or what?
Not at all. Not at all.
To get out there?
Nothing. I mean, I shouldn't say nothing.
So are we using our current vehicles?
There's shared resources between Palatine Rural, Palatine Fire, and our Rolling Meadows Fire. We have a cache A of equipment that will be used, along with certain supplies that is in a list, I think it's on there, in the plan that Northwest will supplement and provide, including the necessary, even a huge heart monitor where we can possibly have the need to provide 12 lead EKGs and send it directly to the physician. So this, so all of the, I guess, hardware is accounted for and a shared resource. We do the same thing at this time with the RPM endeavor and almost everything we do, including HOs, training officers, EMS, and the like. So for us, and the reason I believe that Northwest reached out to the RPM endeavor was because of this and the trust that the residents in Rolling Meadows have with their paramedics, and the same thing with Palatine and Rural, which is Inverness on top of that.
Okay, great. Again, thanks for the answers, and I would just tell you from a personal experience that this program would have been very helpful for our family a few years ago, when my father-in-law was in bad shape. I think these would have prevented a lot of paramedic calls. So I really appreciate you coming forward with this program. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Gallo?
Joe Gallo, fourth ward. I want to say thank you for bringing this document forward. It's extremely comprehensive, especially in the pilot design and workflow, where you outlined the MIH concept and how the resources are used. The one thing that I did not see in here, even looking toward the pilot goals, when it comes to identifying this, moving from a pilot program to a continuation phase, what are the metrics that we're looking to accomplish in this in terms of sustainability? You mentioned something like 39% reduction in pulmonary edema. Do we have metrics for our specific geography?
We do. At the back, where I talked about the quality improvement and management section, I've got several pages of metrics that start on page 26. So this would be, because all of our patient care reports are electronic nowadays, I'm able to be, run data from their side of the reporting as well as the Northwest Community Healthcare side of the reporting. So we're working with quality management at the hospital as well as the data reporting that we already can do through Image Trend, which is our software for their patient care report. And we will give all of the community some rather detailed reporting on what we're looking for in terms of our reductions. I don't think that we have to have a 49% reduction, but I would be really happy if we had a 10% reduction in some of the preventable, you know, readmits, even if it's to the emergency department. I ran the numbers in 2017, we're running them again for 18. So we had 23 residents from Rolling Meadows that actually were what we call recidivists, where we were there a bunch of times to see them. These are the kind of patients we're hoping that we'll be able to do better care navigation for. Part of what we'll do with this program is just get them connected with better community resources, which may just mean that we get additional people that can help them with some of their particular needs. In Palatine, for example, we had one gentleman that we were called there three times a day for weeks on end just to move his legs because he had multiple sclerosis and he couldn't move his own legs. And he was very resistant to having additional help in the home, and we needed to be able to work with him to say there were better resources for him, and we ultimately there were better resources for him. And we ultimately had a great, successful outcome for him. So until we really run this pilot to see what are the kinds of things that we're going to find, in talking with the colleagues that have done this for a long time at Sherman Hospital, another example, is they had a woman that was very, very hard of seeing. She was almost blind. And she was trying to fill her own pill prescriptions only by touch. And so she would just kind of feel the pills and put them in her planner, only to find out that the manufacturer of the medications changed the shape of the pill. But she didn't know that. So she was ending up taking her medications wrong all the time, and she was back to the hospital every single week. As soon as they figured out a better way to have her pills filled, she wasn't back in over six months. So I think some of the stories will be compelling in their simplicity. There's all kinds of needs out there right now that just aren't being met. And this is what we're hoping we'll be able to do.
Thank you. Further questions?
Quick follow-up on that. The patient that had multiple calls a day for multiple sclerosis, the hospital or the paying entity honored each one of those trips?
No, what they were doing is he was refusing to come to the hospital. He just wanted us to be able to move his legs and then leave. So he was a refusal of service.
We only charge for transport.
And they typically only charge for train supports.
So our time getting from point of origin to that destination is no charge?
Community service.
Do our staff bill internally and time-wise? Is there any sort of accounting for that, financial accounting?
We could tell you how many transports and how many EMS calls we had. But the standard in the community and entire Northwest suburb is people don't charge. I've looked at that as far as a different charge, a service charge that the city could look at as far as, I guess, dynamic service providing, dynamic service. So if we had to extricate somebody from an automobile, or break in, and these kind of things. So there's other revenue streams that we can look at, but basically the intent to go to the call and figure a determination whether we can handle it. And indeed, they do have to sign out against medical advice and make the call to the physician on a call. And it's a, you know, a normal medical release from the scene. There's nothing to prevent that, except some psych-social interventions, which we have outstanding, we have outstanding resource, one person in Rolling Meadows to assist us with that. But there is other avenues available.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Chief. Thank you for coming.
You're very welcome.
If you have questions after your meeting, my email should be made easily accessible to you. And I'm very happy to be able to answer any questions that you might have on the ongoing basis.
Thank you. Ms. Gallagher is making her way up for the fiscal year 2019 budget. The anticipation in the room, there are sparks flying. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we are distributing the 2019 proposed budget to the City Council and the general public. Tonight, we just want to do the distribution. We are also letting you know that there are no discussion items for tonight. As you know, our 300-plus-page document is the start of the kickoff for the budget process for 2019. I would also tell you that it is a long-term planning tool, and also designed for our fiscal responsibility for the city of Rolling Meadows. And I want to just give you a couple additional items. Like I mentioned, there are no discussion items for tonight. Within the packet tonight, in your agenda packet for the COW meeting, is the proposed budget planning calendar, the proposed tax levy. And then also, the budget is loaded on the city's website. You did receive a link tonight to the proposed budget. It will be available in a printed copy at the library for residents as well, but it is loaded on the city's website. As we've done in the past, the city manager and I will be scheduling one-on-one meetings with the city council and the mayor to review the budget, typically before the next October COW meeting, if possible. And then also, just a couple side notes as well, the public hearing for the city tax levy and the library tax levy will take place at the October 9th city council meeting. The public hearing for the city and the library's budgets will take place at the October 23rd council meeting. And then what we do, required by state statute, is publish in a local newspaper, the publications for the tax levy and the budget hearings. But we like to just let you know, and that's also shown on the budget calendar. This proposed budget, as shown in the write-up as well, was generated by our new Tyler Munis ERP system, our Enterprise Resource Planning System. We did just go live with the ERP in terms of the financials piece, the first phase of six phases. And this in particular has been worked on since April, April-May timeframe. There are some things that we're trying to integrate before we do the entire adopted budget. And even before we get to the October COW meeting, we're going to integrate a few more pieces. I wanted to walk you through a couple items in that, to that regard. Because it's generated with the new ERP system, like I said, we're working still with the Tyler Munis developers. And you'll notice a couple different changes. And just bear with us, and please, for your patience, as we integrate those items. We are trying to make sure that this is a data-driven analysis going forward, and that we have more items for you for further analysis. As we've mentioned, there will be upgrades coming up. And then I would also mention that we are trying to enhance this as continued usability and comparability overall. You will see in the general fund summary page, when you open up the document, as a comparison, we have added an ending fund balance estimate, and then for 2018, and an ending fund balance estimate for 2019. At this point in time, the city's general fund balance estimate does not have a manager's hold, and does have revenue estimates for video gaming applications and video gaming. They are estimates at this point in time from what data we're gathering. We may update those as we go through the budget process. The ending fund balance approximately is $8.4 million, which is about three months of reserves, or 26% for fund balance in the general fund. Like I mentioned, we're going to be going through a lot of other items when we go one-on-one, and then also at the October committee of the whole meeting. I did want to mention year-over-year revenue change and expenditure change for the general fund is about 1%, just under 1% for revenues and expenditures. When you are reviewing the draft proposed budget, you will see in the comparison detail pages, one-on-one comparison from 2018 to 2019, there's now a column, so that you can see the dollar change. That's a new enhancement. And then what we're also trying to do across all the funds is show you the line item details, similar to the 2018 budget, and that's also in your document. While we're releasing it tonight, again, there are some integrations and additions that we'll be adding, because of the fact it's still a working document. But we're trying to enhance overall, since it is a new ERP system. I just wanted a footnote as well, the local road fund does have the natural gas tax estimated. And then we did remove the vehicle sticker expenditures in that, and as well as revenues. Again, we're trying to make this a multi-year look, and try to provide more enhancements overall. We'll add more graphs and charts as we go along. And just please know that we're working on this and trying to make this a working document. We're, of course, open to any questions at this time, but again, this is really for release for you. It is a draft tax levy in there, and I did want to review that real quickly with you. In the packet itself, there is a write-up on that, and that's also in the proposed budget. The release of the tax levy tonight is in advance of the public hearing that will take place on October 9th. And there is detailed description on that. I'm going to leave that in the packet, but I did want to just review this quickly with you, that the draft tax levy is similar to what was released in the July committee of the whole meeting. And with that being said, the overall percentage change is 4.7% year-over-year, and then about a $657,000 change, $657,430. What I would mention at the bottom of the summary page, is that an average increase to a homeowner is typically ranging $20 to $75. We did provide you that. It is a draft tax levy. We're going to leave that there tonight, just only because of the fact that we are providing the one-on-one meetings, and then in October, we'll come back for an entire discussion on the budget. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but tonight's just the release.
Yeah, as Melissa said, there is no discussion, but we do have questions for clarification. Mr. Cannon, of the first?
First word. Thank you, Melissa. I guess, just a recommendation I make, the property tax estimate increase per household, to my knowledge, many of the people that live west of 53 pay a lot more than $10,000 a year right now in their property tax. So I guess it would be helpful if you extended that chart down to maybe $15,000 or $20,000 a year. Because I know for a fact, a lot of people pay a lot more than $10,000 a year. So it'd just be nice to have a hard number there, so people understand exactly what it is. Because 75 is not the cap.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. We'll do that.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for clarification? Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, Mayor.
We look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Rob Ward, sir?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Hope to keep this brief. I'm joined here tonight with the resident engineer for Christopher Burke Engineering, Ryan Lindeman, and street superintendent Bill Sucecki, if there are any questions regarding road construction moving forward in 2019, or the recently completed 2018 project. Here tonight, as we have been historically, to make you aware that we are in preparation of the engineering required for the 2019 program currently proposed in the 2019 budget, there is $900,000 earmarked for construction, $100,000 earmarked for engineering on the 2019 program, and 2020 engineering that we would bring to you in September. The roads are listed in the memo that we are proposing for 2019. As in the past, we, staff has met numerous times to plan these projects, based on their pavement rating, geographic location, and how they integrate with the utility capital plan for the next five years. Those locations are Ren Lane, Ren Court, Hawk Lane, Oriole Lane, and King Fisher Lane. We do have two alternate locations, Quail Lane and Quail Court, which if the engineering indicates that we can potentially fund those projects as well, we will include those in the bid documents. And if the bids come back unfavorable, we will simply drop a road section or two out of the program. As I said, we typically provide this list to you in September, so we can start the engineering in late fall. We have historically, at least since 2015, received very favorable pricing by getting the project awarded, or excuse me, publicly let in the first quarter of the year. We have received indication that the oil prices may have a negative impact on the favorable pricing we've received. So it's even more important, I think, that we get this project let earlier than later. So on that item, I would simply ask if the city council is favorable, or feels that we should continue to move forward and provide an engineering proposal for your consideration at the next city council meeting for the 2019 program.
Thank you, Rob. My question is, weren't we doing engineering in multiple years, if I recall right, in the past?
So what we do is, we do the engineering this year for next year's program.
Right.
And we also use the construction, we also pay for the construction observation part of the engineering in the project year. So it's a kind of a revolving funding mechanism that gets used year-over-year.
Questions for clarification from anybody from the council? Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike Cannon, first word one. Rob, thank you for this. I was just wondering, on your number two road reconstruction program?
Yes.
Is it the only way, would that be funded, strictly from the bond thing? Is that what we're looking at?
Actually, I wanted to get direction on item A, and then I'll move on to item B, and walk you through those projects. I should have said that to begin with.
Sorry, go ahead. Any further questions on first item? So you're basically looking for a straw vote to move forward?
On the engineering for the 2019 resurfacing project.
Okay. Can we have a show of hands from the council, so they have good direction to staff to move forward on the 2019 engineering, correct?
For resurfacing only.
For resurfacing only.
Correct.
All in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you. Now, moving on to item B, I thought it was a good opportunity to let the council know where we were with the local road fund capital programs, capital program that was discussed at the capital improvement committee level. These are projects that are proposed as part of the capital improvement plan for 2019. The items bolded on page three, I believe it is, are the items I'm going to discuss, that have, I think are significant to the city council. The first one is the Kirchhoff Road resurfacing project. Again, that project is moving forward. We are publicly letting that project through IDOT on November 9th, I believe it is. We, there is an expectation that, given the time of year, with the 2019 construction schedule, that the city will receive favorable prices on that project. Item number two is the road reconstruction program, the one that Alderman Cannon was referring to. That is the program we presented two years ago, where as we would start to reconstruct roads that were built with a POS-based material. And we did, in fact, do phase in our first year program two years ago. We weren't able to do it this year because of the Kirchhoff Road potential project. So again, the roads that we would be proposing are listed in the memo, which include Highland Drive, Kevin Lane, Jessica Court, Michael Court, and the resurfacing of Prairie Lane. The third project is the Euclid Avenue Bike Path Grant Project. That project was recently let by Illinois Department of Transportation. We had the pre-construction meeting, and that project will be moving forward with a November 30th substantial completion date. The Barker Avenue Bridge Reconstruction Project is just finalizing some land acquisition required through the school district. Following that, there are some final IDOT documents required. And then we're going to be proposing with IDOT either a late December, early January project letting, with the construction occurring in June of 2019, to be done over the school year, when it doesn't impact the high school or the grade school there. The Kirchhoff Median Replacement Project, as you're aware from previous discussions, that project is in there, is funded in here, with the understanding that we will be able to take advantage of grant funding, because it has been designed as part of the Kirchhoff Road resurfacing project. So there may be significant savings on that project as well. The Arbor Drive resurfacing project, again, we continue to contact Cook County. We, again, believe that we have not been awarded any grant funds. Staff will continue to pursue that grant opportunity. However, when we do the water main replacement program on that road, we will simply be doing a pavement patch until such time as it can be planned into the five-year capital plan. The last two items are the Algonquin Road New Wilkie Intersection Improvement, and the Weber Road Resurfacing Project. I listed those simply because we have had conversations with Arlington Heights and the Northwest Municipal Conference Liaison that is taking over the road projects, and made them aware of our intent to have these projects worked on over the next several years, and to make sure that the funding is allocated for those projects. So in conclusion, the direction staff would be looking for on those items would be, would the council be interested in having staff move forward on the engineering for the road reconstruction program this fall, with the understanding that if funding is not available this year, we will have the engineering documents, and we can shelve those until the following budget year? Or if there's partial funding available, we can split that project into two. Geographically, it makes sense, and we can at least do something this year. So that's the direction I'd be seeking on part B.
Thank you. Any further questions? Mr. Cannon?
Thank you again, Mike Cannon, first word one. Rob, just on number two, so... So I'm a little bit confused by the statement you just made. You said engineering for that program. Those roads were engineered two or three years ago. We took soil samples and everything out there. So that has to be all redone again?
Well, it only did the, and Ryan may need to step up here to tell you what engineering gets done, but the road profile is done for the specific sections that are getting replaced. All that engineering would have to be redone because it's an entire new section of roadway. Now granted, there is probably some information that can be reused, but for the most part, all the grades would be different. You'd have to do the surveys for the individual driveways to be able to place the curb at the appropriate grade when you reconstructed it. My assumption, and Ryan can come up and speak to it a little more, but I would think the entire thing would still have to be re-engineered because we only engineered the section of roadway that we reconstructed as part of that program.
But that, but you're missing my point. So maybe I'm not making myself clear, so I apologize. These roads were engineered over two years ago. They took soil samples and everything on them. This is my block. So, I mean, they took soil samples out of our street at a couple different locations. Ryan's company was out there and did all kinds of preliminary work. Alls I'm suggesting is, why would we redo something that we did already?
Well, again, I can't speak to whether we did actual construction engineering documents for that area.
Well, we were in queue. We were supposed to be done last year. So, I mean, we were in the queue to do it last year, but we got knocked out because of Kirchhoff.
Correct, correct. But I can't speak to whether we did it before I got here, but I'm not aware since 2015, at least, where we actually did the actual construction documents and engineering required.
Okay, fair enough. If you would know that, the answer, that'd be great.
Ryan, could you just?
Ryan Lindeman with Christopher Burke Engineering.
Thank you.
We did take preliminary course, so we do have the data on what the pavement section is, and we will be able to use a lot of the same design principles that we used for the previous section. I would anticipate some cost savings in the design from that aspect, but we will have, you know, new grades, any storm sewer improvements, plans and specs, all that stuff that wasn't done for the section that didn't get completed in 2017.
Well, didn't we spend $7,000 or $8,000 on all that stuff before? That's all, alls I'm suggesting, I'm not saying you did anything wrong, but I thought all that work was done already. I mean, we were supposed to be, last year, we were supposed to get the repave done, because you were supposed to do the second part of Highland, and then switch over to the east side and do all that. But we were told, I mean, we spent money out of our budget a couple years ago to get some of this engineering work done.
Yeah, yeah. I know what you're talking about now. So we did spend an extra amount of money on a portion of Highland that we added to the project for 2017 for the reconstruction because the bids came in so favorable. But I'm certain that if we did preliminary, as Ryan said, preliminary soil sampling and some preliminary grade shooting, it wasn't to the extent that needs to be done to get the plans ready to be publicly let. That is for sure the case. So I know what you're saying. It was about a $9,000 additional, kind of a change order, because we did add a significant portion of Highland to that, but because we had a lot of the data that we just collected, it was significantly less. So I do agree with that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Nick Budman, second ward. The Weber Road resurfacing?
Yes.
Are we talking about the right-by-mire? Or would?
No. Weber Road is Old New Wilkie, isn't it called? Old New Wilkie? It's shared with, Arlington Heights owns the east half, and Rolling Meadows owns the west half. We jointly submitted for project funding several years ago, so we are on the list, I think they call it the B-list for funding through the Northwest Municipal Conference. But again, as you guys all know from recent conversations regarding Kirchhoff, their philosophy regarding resurfacing has changed. So we really have been pushing them to make sure they have that funding available so we don't expend a lot of resources trying to get this project ready, and they're not going to fund it. So that's what that was about.
And Arlington Heights is participating 50%?
50% of the 20% that we would be responsible for. So we would be responsible for 10%, and they would be responsible for 10%. The Northwest Municipal Conference STP, I believe it's called, STP grant, would pay the 80%.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any further questions for clarification? Staff is looking, in other words, just so we're clear, what you asked for is you're asking to move forward with engineering. However, if we get funding, you'll do what you can, and if you don't get funding, you won't move forward.
And yes, regardless of what the funding level is in the 2019 budget, we will have the plans ready to roll whenever that funding is available.
So we just need a straw vote from council to give direction to public works. All in favor? I'm sorry?
I have one clarifying question. John Diaz, Alderman, sixth ward. If the engineering is done now, how long will it be good for?
Yeah, my expectation would be, because it's road and not utility, would be...
Because it's a reconstruction.
Yes, several, I'm sorry, yeah.
Because it's a reconstruction, it should be good barring any unforeseen utility collapse, or it should be good for indefinitely, the design at least. Talking for the reconstruction program, specifically for item two?
Yes.
Yes.
The only caveat I would make to that is if there were portions of the plan that had to be amended as a result of new IDOT requirements. That would be the only thing that would have to be tweaked. But as far, once we've done the engineering on a road reconstruction, because all the grades will have been shot, and there would be a control point that we could always refer to, I don't think, you know, I was going to say, you know, up to 10 years, but I don't know, I don't think they would ever go bad, to tell you the truth.
Mr. Diaz?
It's fine, thank you.
Any further clarification? So once again, where staff is asking direction, all in favor, please raise their hand. It's unanimous.
And we will hope to bring those items to the city council next week for consideration.
Okay. Excuse me, we have one further.
So, a quick question. You know, we had talked earlier in the summer about Brookview Sunset being repaved next year if the sewer thing goes through. I saw no mention of this. That's why I don't want to bring it up. I'm just wondering where that sits publicly so that people know.
Yeah, so we've talked about, in the capital improvement program, we've talked about including that funding in with the utility project. And really, until we know some definitive plan with what we're going to do with that sewer, it's, I think it would be irresponsible for us to earmark that money that is in short supply for road program year-over-year until we have a little more definitive answer.
So probably, we won't have anything, we won't be doing anything in 19 on that.
Oh, no. I wouldn't expect 19, with the exception, if we did do the sewer, I know there is some money earmarked for widening. I think there's a little bit of a widening there.
Especially on Brookview.
Yeah, so I'm not as familiar with the details of that particular project, but I do know it's come up in our conversations regarding when to plan out that resurfacing. My expectation would be, it would be the year after the sewer program is completed.
Great. Thanks for your answer.
Sure.
Thank you, folks, for coming up here. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
We are done.